Welcome to the City of Lancaster's Town Hall Meeting. Tonight, the Town Hall Meeting will focus on the Mariposa and Desert View neighborhoods. We'll start with the Resource Fair outdoors and then move indoors where the council members will be speaking along with the sheriffs doing a question and answer segment and then a presentation about local programs including the Unite program. Come join us.
Hi.
Welcome. Thank you all for joining us tonight for the Mariposa Town Hall Meeting. We're very glad to have you all here and we hope to share some really good information with all of you tonight. I'd like to start off our program tonight by introducing our dignitaries and our partners. Let me start off by introducing Councilwoman Sandra Johnson. Captain Pat Nelson from the Lancaster Sheriff's Station. Mark Bezegian, City Manager for the City of Lancaster. Principal Kira Van Aker, Principal of Mariposa Elementary. Our Lancaster Neighborhood Violization Commissioners, I'd actually like them to stand when I call their name. Our Chairman Stephen Derryberry. Lisa Moulton. Linda Lawson. Angela Hearns. And Stan Mohammed. Finally, I'd like to recognize our Safer Stronger Neighborhoods Committee who helped to put this event on tonight. Now, I'd like to welcome Principal Van Aker who's going to welcome us for the evening tonight.
Well, thank you very much. As Principal of Mariposa, I would like to welcome all our Lancaster Mayor, Mr. Paris, along with all of our distinguished guests and community members. And also, I'd like to introduce our Lancaster School District Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Conti, who's here. Along with our Board Members, Mrs. Grooms and Mr. Clevin. And thank you very much and welcome to Mariposa.
Thank you, Principal Van Aker. Tonight, we're going to discuss a lot of really wonderful things about the Mariposa neighborhood. We're going to talk about some concerns, we're going to talk about issues, we're going to talk about the things that are working here in the neighborhoods. And we're going to give all of you the opportunity to share what you think, you know, what things are working well, what you'd like to see improve. And you'll be able to talk to, you know, all of our representatives that are here, Lancaster Sheriff's Station. This is just a really wonderful opportunity for all of you. With that, I'd now like to introduce Councilwoman Sandra Johnson.
Before we get started, I just had some awesome news that I want to share with everyone. We love it when our staff from the City of Lancaster has a little bit of romance going on. And one of our staff member Rebecca Ware just shared with us that she is engaged as of Sunday. So, I'd like to give her a big round of applause. You know, and as my mother told me when I got married, is never treat each other as husband and wife because you'll get bored, always treat each other as boyfriend and girlfriend. So, there you go. And my husband definitely treats me as a girlfriend all the time. So, happily married. You know, thank you so much for coming here today. Today is going to be a very informative day for all of us here, citizens here of the City of Lancaster. We're going to have some wonderful information from our sheriffs. And as Patty was saying, this is going to be an evening where we're able to really come together as a community and ask the questions and/or also give the concerns that we may have as citizens for our City of Lancaster. But before we discuss our concerns, I would like to take advantage of giving a huge round of applause to our sheriffs who every day risk their lives for us, the citizens of Lancaster. So, please honor me and give them a big round of applause. You know, and with us saying that and honoring them to risk their lives every day for us here, the citizens of Lancaster, we do have to come together as a community, as one, to make things happen. And as I said before, when we come together as a community, we make magic happen. We truly do. When we are able to discuss what our concerns are and what we also are pleased with in our community, it helps us all grow. And ultimately, that's what we want to do here in our community. I know the council members, the first and foremost important thing for us is the safety for our citizens here. And we, the City of Lancaster, have one of the highest contracts with the Sheriff's Department. And that's because we want to make sure not have any excuses or reasons for us not to be safe here in our City of Lancaster. And we're so proud that you've honored us to be here today so we can discuss some of these things. But we have to remember that when we do, that we have to come together as one, as a unity, to make sure that we can make that magic happen. And let those people that aren't following the law or the rules, let them know that we will not stand by that. That we, as a community, the City of Lancaster, do not allow that here. The sheriff set that tone, the council sets that tone, the rest of us community also set that tone. And we need to continue to do so. A great example, a man that I look up to so much that does this every day of his life is Pastor Henry Hearns. He's a great example of bringing a community together. And it doesn't matter the neighborhood that you're in, it doesn't matter the age that you are, it doesn't matter the color of your skin or of your religion. What matters is that we all live in the same community, the same city. We all want to be safe. We all want to give the best to our children. And that's what we together will make sure happens. And today, we're going to get a lot of information from the Sheriff's Station so that we can see where we are and where we would like to be. And again, I would like to thank all of you for being active and coming today to make sure that we are all safe. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Next up, I'd like to introduce our Chairman of the Lancaster Neighborhood Violization Commission, Stephen Derryberry.
Being in this gymnasium brings back a lot of good memories for me. I'm going to say probably 1988, 1989, the first year I played city basketball as a youngster, we had practice in this gym. And then probably about 16, 17 years ago, no, probably not that long ago, I was actually one of the rec leaders that started the Lancaster Care's Program at the school. So, this year, when we looked at kind of infiltrating a neighborhood to really, really see what resources were needed so that we could educate the neighborhood and be educated by the neighborhood, I was really excited when we decided to pick this neighborhood, this Mariposa and Desert View neighborhoods. Our commission is dedicated to really understanding what it is, what resources do you need. So, that's what we're here to find out today. We brought some community-based organizations with us to help educate you. But really, the main focus of today is for you to educate us so that we know what you need in this community so that we can do what we can to provide those resources. So, thank you very much for coming. And don't forget, this fall, the Unite Program, which is Unifying Neighborhoods in a Team Effort, is focused on Mariposa and Desert View communities. We want you to be involved. So, pay attention, watch the press releases, read the newspapers, and contact the Parks and Recreation Staff. There's some really great things that can, that can happen in these neighborhoods. We want to hear your suggestions, we want, we want you to be involved. So, please, please assist us with the Unite Program when it comes here this fall. The application process is going on...
It'll start in May.
Starts in May. So, if you have any questions, please ask us. Otherwise, thank you and we're really excited to hear what you have to say tonight.
I'd like to reiterate what Councilwoman Johnson and Commissioner Derryberry said. Thank you very much for coming. This is definitely something that has to be a team effort. There's about a thousand residents for every deputy sheriff. And that's not taking into account those that aren't necessarily on for the shift. So, it's actually a much lower ratio than that. And it's important for everyone to know that we really could never get this job done without your help. And the fact that you're here today is testimony to the fact that you're involved in your community and interested in seeing the best outcomes. Before we go any further, I'd like to introduce some of the supervisors that'll, that will be probably your point of contact for some of the inquiries that you have. And they will be around until after the presentation tonight for questions. First off is the Lieutenant over our Antelope Valley Crime Fighting Initiative, Lieutenant Larry Gray. We have our special unit supervisor, liaison for the City of Lancaster, Lieutenant Ed We have the Community Services Unit Lieutenant Keith Lieberman. The Community Services Unit Sergeant Anna Fernandez. And our top corps sergeant, Marcy Martyr. And hiding in the back there is Sergeant Teresa Dawson, our Community Relations Sergeant. I'd like to also point out, I know it's been mentioned before, but there are some outstanding resources that have come here today to please avail yourselves of their information. They do have a lot of good information out there and can make some excellent contacts for you to help with some of the problems that aren't specifically related to enforcement that we kind of may not be able to be as helpful as we'd like to be for you. And some of those, and some of these organizations will do that gladly for you. What we're going to do is talk about the survey. It was conducted on March 16th, a little over a month ago. And it included personnel from the AVE CFI, COPS Bureau, the Community Services Unit Teams from Lancaster and Palmdale, city employees from Lancaster, and obviously, all of you that were contacted during the, during the survey. Our focus reporting district, and that's police code for how we keep track of what crimes occur in certain areas, is 1121. That area, as you can see from the map, is essentially 10th Street West to Beach and then Avenue H8 down to I. The survey area was a little bit smaller as it was. I believe we surveyed a little over 600 or attempted to survey a little over 600 homes. But the survey area is down there and it encompassed the, what would be the southeast corner of that reporting district. And those were chosen because we felt that would give us a good overall of the entire focus area. These are the different zones for the, for the surveys. What we looked at before we began with this is we went through a 90-day period prior to the survey date. We had 67 total Part 1 crimes in that particular reporting district, most of which were thefts or larcenies. And as you can see, we, we had a over, well, actually right out a dozen assaults, which is obviously unacceptable. This is just the definition of what actually falls under a Part 1 crime. So, when you hear cities talk about their Part 1 crime rate, that's what they're discussing is these particular eight crimes. And they're figured against how often they occur per 10,000 residents. After our survey, you can see there was quite a drop in reported Part 1 crimes in the, in the reporting district. That's because you, immediately after the survey, we're already getting some extra patrols and some directed patrols based on what our survey results were. We have really not gotten full-blown into trying to attack the problems that were identified, but we're already making a dent in the reported crimes in, in your area. This is just an example for those of you that didn't actually get surveyed of what the survey looked like. Some of the questions they asked, how feel, how safe you feel in your neighborhood, what's your number one identified issue for your neighborhood? And we'll talk about what the results of those were. Started out with how satisfied were you with the Sheriff's Department's service? Out of 214 surveys that were either returned or taken there at the time, about 168 of them or so were satisfied or very satisfied, which is, that's good for us. Obviously, we'd like to see that even higher. But fortunately, our very dissatisfied was a fairly low rate as well. And that may be some of the people that recognized that, that they were probably going to be the focus of some of our efforts in the coming weeks and they didn't want to see us there. So, primary concerns, surprisingly enough, I would have thought violent crime would have been higher. It's probably a testimony to the, to the difference in the neighborhood already that it's not. Narcotics was actually the number one identified concern followed by thefts. There was obviously some concern about gangs and vandalism. I think gangs and vandalism, as most of us know, go hand in hand. So, you could almost combine those two. And if that's the case, they're pretty close to our, our concerns about theft as well. The nuisance activity was a little bit different and that took into account whether or not you felt there was traffic problems, people speeding, whether or not there were municipal code violations about houses, people not taking care of their yards, for instance, junkyard, cars out in front, the kind of things that aren't necessarily criminal in nature but can cause a blight on a neighborhood and, and really lower the quality of living in that neighborhood. And those are the kinds of things that through a team effort with the city and code enforcement and, and other things that we hope to address as well, that will take some assistance from other agencies. But as you can see, many of them are already represented here today, animal control, the city, et cetera. This is always a good indication of how we feel that we're doing in a neighborhood and it's how safe do you feel walking in your neighborhood. Only 8% felt very safe. And frankly, that's not an acceptable percentage. We want to see that quite a bit higher. And that's obviously something that we want to see changed by the time we do our post surveys. And we talked a little bit about why that is and I think we'll get an opportunity to do a little bit more of that tonight. This is actually the, what you consider to be the highest priority for us working on in your neighborhood. And again, as you can see, narcotics is one of the higher rated problems that they want to see addressed or that you want to see addressed in your neighborhood. Fully 79, 79 people actually mentioned that, which is about 37%. Everything else was in signal digits. So that you are aware of what we have, we have a narcotics unit that's assigned to Lancaster. It's, consists of three or four detectives and a crew sergeant. As you can probably guess, they're spread pretty, pretty thin, covering 500 some square miles. So, what we end up doing is we end up augmenting their expertise, if you will, with all of these fine deputies here who will be out looking for narcotics violations, gathering information for search warrants, in some instances, writing their own warrants to augment what our narcotics crew is capable of doing with, with their limited resources. I would encourage anybody that has information to make sure that you contact the station or Crime Stoppers. You can do that anonymously to provide information about houses that you feel are, are engaged in this narcotics activity. That way, we, we know where to start focusing our efforts. So, here's some of the conclusions we are able to draw and some of the things that we intend to do in order to bring about some positive change. More patrols in the neighborhood. I think everybody in, in the city would like to see that. Neighborhood watch, which is something that I'm sure the city's going to discuss a little bit later, that's huge. Like I said, this is a team effort and we do not, contrary to some people's belief, have a crystal ball where we can immediately look at somebody and say, yeah, that guy's holding or that guy's got a gun or whatever the case may be. We really need the eyes and ears of all of you to help us find those folks. Code enforcement is another thing that the city will be working. We have a very robust traffic unit here and they will be focusing much of their efforts in this area as well. So, we can slow down traffic around the schools and, and some of the main boulevards. One of the other things that we do on a regular basis and will continue to do is engage in undercover operations for a variety of investigations, including thefts and narcotic sales and even gang activities. So, without getting, obviously without getting into too much detail, we regularly participate in undercover operations through the assistance of the Antelope Valley Crime Fighting Initiative. We're able to bring additional resources up here from Palmdale and, and sometimes as far south as Altadena and, and the Chrysanthemum Valley area, which we, we find there's a lot of transitory traffic between the two areas. Community outreach programs, obviously many of them are here today. Again, I would suggest that you avail yourselves of their, of their information and assistance. And we've already started the, through, with the city's assistance, our party cars, again for this year. They were off for a few weeks because it's, there're not a whole lot of party activity when it's cold. But obviously, now that things are warming up, we'll be back to having cars that are specifically detailed to address large parties and, and neighborhood gatherings that are getting out of hand, hopefully before they get to the point where there's some violence involved. That's the intent of having those extra cars on. And like I said, those, those started about three weeks ago. So, they'll be back in, in service in your area as well. I think we've already talked pretty much about our goals. The big goal is a partnership with everybody here in order to improve the quality of life for this area. It's not something that we intend to come and leave. But obviously, the extra resources that we bring in to address the, the issues that we identify tonight will have to move on to another area. But we will always have a contingent here to prevent, hopefully, backslippage to, to let those problems begin to rear their ugly heads again. We're going to do a 90-day assessment. It's going to go through June because actually, we've, we've actually started it this month. I check our crime stats every Monday, but I know that that's done even more often by our other supervisors that are looking to address these crime trends before they really become problems. And I, and that's something that we're doing on a regular basis. Another great thing about the resources that we have and the Antelope Valley Crime Fighting Initiative, as well as our COPS teams, is that we can bring resources to bear on identified problems as they come up. And we, that versatility and flexibility gives us the ability to, to redeploy a large amount of resources even overnight. So, that's been very helpful for us in addressing some of these problems that we'll talk about tonight. Here's how you can help, obviously, report everything that you see. We talked about this right after the Boston incident as well. The catchphrase, I think nationwide that's been used is if you see something, say something. That holds true even if it's, even if it's just a matter of narcotics activity in your neighborhood. It's an excellent idea, obviously, to know where your kids are and who they're hanging with. Make sure that they're going to school. A vast majority of our burglaries in residential areas occur during the day and that's as a result of truancy. Many juveniles who have ditched school end up finding themselves in the company of less than stellar friends and will frequently end up filling their day by breaking into your home or your neighbor's home. So, it is important for you to know where your children are and who it is that they associate with. Obviously, everyone has a stake in how your neighborhood appears. A neighborhood that appears well-maintained generally is not a, as an inviting target to thieves because you have some sense of ownership and you are more likely to be watching for those people who would do you harm. So, it's important to keep your home tidy and, and, you know, if you know that yard cars and a three-foot lawn is a problem for your neighbors, then do them a favor by taking care of that yourself. You've taken a great first step here to get to know your neighbors by being here tonight. Hopefully, sometime during this program, you'll have an opportunity to introduce yourselves to your neighbors, make those contacts. It provides a great base for your neighborhood watch. And face-to-face meetings are always much more productive, I believe, than anything else, either done via the telephone or email or online or however else you may end up doing it. I, obviously, working with the city and sheriff's staff is, is why we're here tonight. And we are here for you. Again, once this program's completed, or this portion of it anyway, we'll have a question and answer and go from there. And obviously, if you have some problems that you think that we or the city or any of these other agencies that are here today can help you with, the first step is to ask.
So, you've heard about tonight, the sheriff's captain who's talked about some of the things that they've encountered here in your own neighborhoods. And, you know, oftentimes, whether it's the Sheriff's Department or the City of Lancaster, we've come out here and, and tried, not to offend anybody, but to force ourselves upon you folks. But Unite Lancaster is an opportunity for you folks to actually come and tell us as a community, you residents telling us what you would like to see done in your city, in your neighborhood by applying for some resources. In the city, we partner with sponsors, we partner with a lot of the resources, the vendors you see out here, the nonprofit agencies. And we bring those folks into your neighborhood to help do some programming. Last year, we were in the Eldorado neighborhood and we saw some significant changes after the Unite Program back in September of 2012. And the goal for Unite Lancaster is really to, again, empower the residents to come up with some programming that will strengthen and, and make your neighborhood more secure. Some of the things that we did last year, and we focused on beautification, public safety, and neighborhood strengthening, basically, community involvement. Some things we did as far as beautification, we had a neighborhood that actually did some cleanup in the parkways and redid their parkways and making them drought tolerant. From public safety side, we had an organization that went out and painted something as simple as a street address to help the fire department and the sheriff's department quickly respond to those locations where there's a need for call for service because they're able to see those, those addresses on the street curbs. So, they worked with the community, those residents, in painting, going around and painting almost the entire Eldorado neighborhood. Some of the community involvement things, we've had projects where they were community gardens that were created in vacant lots. We have, in fact, I see Day here, she's with AB Chess House. And last year in Eldorado, she actually held a chess tournament and a chess education for kids, really educating the younger kids. And they did a fantastic job of trying to relate or correlate how chess can help build your thinking process, not only playing with chess, but then how does that relate to your everyday living and how you can think about, you know, the decisions you need to make. So, I thought that was a great program. We also had a number of teen organizations that went through a six-week course. One of the nonprofits got the neighborhood kids and went through a six-week course on how to have better lifestyle, better engagement, or what, what it means to be a better community resident. And then they turned around on Unite Lancaster and went out and cleaned for free out, then knocked on neighbors' doors and said, we'd like to do some landscaping, cut, trim your, cut your trees, trim your, mow your grass, things like that, sweep your, your, your area there. So, again, it's an opportunity for you as residents to come to the city and tell us what you would want to do. And so, Unite Lancaster, we, we will start the application process on May 8th. You'll, you can get an application either on the city's website or come to City Hall in the Parks and Rec Department and pick up an application. The application process is open and through till June 14th, which is the final deadline. So, we give you pretty much over a month to, to figure out what you want to do and submit an application. We also will have two pre-application information sessions. So, if you have questions, you can come to May 15th, which is an evening at 6:30 at City Hall to get your questions answered. Or if you can't make it in the middle of the week, we also will have an information session on June 1st, which is a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. to answer questions about how to, to go through the process. And then... And then by August 6th, the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission members that are here will start to award those applications that will get projects. And then we will start to work with you as residents and partnering you with the different resources that are available. And then finally, on September 21st, that is Unite Lancaster Day. And that's where you're going to see a lot of people coming out here, and whether it's doing a block party for Neighborhood Watch, because you maybe have an interest in doing Neighborhood Watch, and one of the ways to do that is to invite your neighbors out to a block party and introduce our public safety officers out there to start a Neighborhood Watch, introduce the sheriff's department. So those are some of the other type of projects that you can get involved in. So I definitely encourage you all, visit the website, the city's website, citayoflancasterca.org, and do a search for Unite. Look at the application there, fill it out, and bring it in before the June 14th date. And we will be out here in force to help work side-by-side with you to strengthen and make your community better. So, thank you.
So now you've heard from all of us, and we're interested in hearing from all of you and, you know, understanding what your concerns are and what your needs are. We have a microphone that is located to my left, and, you know, you're free to walk up and answer or ask any questions, or if you also just want to raise your hand, and I can kind of point. Does anybody have any questions? Somebody has to have a question. Yes?
Is the intensive sheriff's coverage from, that you were talking about, was that in El Dorado last year?
El Dorado was the last, oh, sorry.
And have you got any statistics on what has happened since you removed your intensive presence?
I don't, with me, we did do a study on the crime rate as compared to the previous year, but I don't have those figures with me tonight.
I mean, do you have any anecdotal information about what's happened since you left, or since your intensive presence left El Dorado?
No, I think we have been, at least through the first four months of this year, experiencing a decrease in crime from the previous year for the first four months across the city. And the El Dorado area is no different, and we've actually had some great success with the crime rate thus far. Uh-huh. Anybody else? Yeah?
If you don't mind, the surveillance drone that goes around?
Uh-huh.
How is that utilized by the sheriff's department? How is that helping in any crime prevention?
That is the law enforcement aerial platform system, or LEAPs. And what it provides for us is a sky view, obviously, that's not always available when we don't have helicopter coverage. It also provides a video feed to our desk while they're dispatching calls. So if we have, for instance, a burglary in progress, we can actually get a video, a live feed video of the affected address or street, oftentimes prior to a unit even being able to arrive there. And if we have, for instance, a suspect who's climbing out a back window and running over a back fence, a deputy arriving in front of the location wouldn't see that and would not be aware of that. So that's probably the number-one use for that aircraft. But it also provides some early warning type of information, for instance, if we're going to serve a search warrant at a particular location. It allows us to see how many people we might expect there, or how many vehicles, or whether or not the particular vehicle that we may be looking for is there before we tip our hands, so to speak, and arrive in front. So it's useful for that as well. It also has the ability to lock onto a particular object. For instance, we have a robbery that just occurred at Walmart, for instance. The plane, if it is capable, and it's all controlled by our desk, the pilot really has no, has no control over the camera itself, but the watch deputy or the operator of the camera system can use that camera to lock onto that object, and it automatically will follow that object. So it gives us the ability to follow a fleeing vehicle, for instance, or in some cases, maybe even a fleeing suspect. It also has a flare capability, so if we're trying to search an area at night, for instance, for a suspect who may be hiding in a neighborhood, it will give us a thermal image and provide us that information ahead of time, where we may be able to see a suspect around a corner who is lying in wait, for instance, for deputies to come around the corner, and they'll have some advance warning of that as a result of the aircraft. Another thing that it's useful for, and the city recognized that early on, is for assessment following some type of a natural disaster, for instance, an earthquake or a fire, a brush fire out, you know, and let's say out on the west side. The plane can give you a much better view than somebody who's on the ground who's trying to assess the size of the fire, for instance, or the fire's path, or the damage that may have been caused by an earthquake or some other natural disaster. So it has a lot of application, and we have somebody who operates it from the desk for 10-hour shift every day. So it's, like I said, it does provide a lot of useful information on a regular basis.
Well, I'm a block captain in another neighborhood, a different, completely different area, but I wanted to thank you for your presence and the work that you do in our area, because our area has been, you know, it helps to have a Neighborhood Watch program in that area, and we do, we're all very close, but it helps to have an officer who's very attentive and helpful in that area, so thank you for that.
That's why we're here. I will say, and I don't know if we have somebody from each of the core areas, do we, today?
We're missing one area.
Okay. What we have done, we have a top core team, and they're assigned to geographical areas within the city. So you actually have a go-to person for your given area, and if you want to find out who that is and how to contact them, I would suggest you contact Sergeant Martyr as soon as we're done with this section here, and she'll be able to give you that information, so you can contact the deputy that's responsible for your given area. It sounds like you probably already know who that is, but...
We sure do, and Lisa might speak up.
Okay, outstanding. Very good, very good. That's what we like to see. Before we go on to another question, I would like to thank the members of our community advisory committee that made it tonight. I don't know where Lisa went, but Sheldon and Lindy, if you guys would raise your hand. They actually act kind of as a liaison for you to contact us if you have questions or concerns, and I would suggest that if you have questions you don't necessarily want to ask in front of the group, that you can contact them as well at some point tonight. Is there anybody else? Yes, Lindy?
With all due respect, with all due respect, I do live in this neighborhood, and on occasion, I take a little, a little something when people say to take pride or ownership in the neighborhood. And the addition to doing the surveys, if you were to also ask how many people are disabled, mentally ill, injured from work-related, so on and so forth. So there may be times, at least when I speak to my neighbors, that it doesn't mean we don't want to cut our grass, or it doesn't mean we're not trying to fix the eaves and overhang, besides the fact we're on fixed incomes. It's either you go to work or you cut your grass. And if you don't have children, or if you don't have other people, so there are things in addition to maybe some of us are slack, but there are also other things that can hinder why things do not look as pretty to some others.
There absolutely are, and I think that's one of the things that the Unite program is intending to assist with. And obviously, mental health is a huge concern for us as well. Unfortunately, like everything else, there are insufficient resources to help many of our persons who are suffering from mental illness, and we often come in contact with them only after it's gotten out of control. And again, we are working on that through mental health in the area here, Mental Health America, MHA, we're doing some training with them, along with CHP and the local agencies, so that we can at least attenuate some of those problems that we've run into with mental health issues here, specifically in the Lancaster area. So I think it's a problem that we recognize, and we're doing what we can, but again, like everything else, everybody's suffering from limited resources, so...
And what I'd also like to say is, if anything, if we can get, I know the mayor's working on it, so I will applaud him, but if we can get more jobs, when you can earn your own money and you actually have a W-2, you also feel better about yourself.
Yeah, I would say that's true.
So if we can get more jobs, if we get more jobs, and we need a grocery store. We're always told that we're overweight, we have poor health in general in this area, okay, in Target Area 1, compared to some of the other areas, but if you have an option between Hot Cheetos and Mountain Dew, then we're going to get fat, and we're going to struggle in regards to our health issues. So if we can push and somebody can partner, anybody out there want to spend a little money, let's get a little grocery store over here, Dollar Tree's great, fantastic, it did put some people to work, but we need a little bit more options.
Well, I think that's obviously something that's been recognized by the city, specifically with the wellness homes, and obviously, if you've read the news in the last few days, the city has gone to great strides to bring jobs here to the valley, and I think they've had some great success there. So I think it's clear that they're aware of those issues, and they are doing what they can to work on those. I would say that Viarta's not too far down the road, so maybe instead of getting those Cheetos, you could walk down to Viarta.
If you don't have transportation and you're sending your eight-year-old kid?
No.
Okay, and then we're still in shopping carts and we're popped. I'm just saying. And, I'm just saying, and if you don't have enough money to catch the bus or the little car that brings you back, then you are getting Cheetos and Mountain Dew. So that's, and the last one, if anything, not everyone can afford the newspaper and/or Time Warner Cable. So I push this all the time. If at all possible, when people, when the city and the sheriff's and everybody's partnering, can we actually put out information that people need in places that we have to go to? So even though we may not like it, if you smoke cigarettes, you feel you have to go get your cigarettes, so you go to the cigarette store, okay? If you drink your booze, you feel you have to drink, you go and you get your booze. So in the place where you're getting your Hot Cheetos and your cigarettes and your booze, can we put up information in regards to what is going on and places for help? If you, I don't know, maybe take a survey and say, "How many people can afford the paper or get Time Warner?" If we don't get Time Warner, we got DirecTV Dish Network because we're bouncing, because we're trying to pay our bills and have a little bit of enjoyment, then what happens is we are left out of the loop. Now, I think we should be proactive as individuals and seek and get that knowledge. Not everybody has cable access or internet access, and you would say, "Really? Are you kidding me?" Really, people really don't have it. Or what if you're looking at an age factor, because they're seniors and they say, "I still got the rotary phone." We need options, and if you can, bus stops, places that in general are non-traditional places to get the information out, because people still have to gather. If you got to get somewhere, you might have to catch a bus.
I would argue that the best place for that is probably through your participation in the Neighborhood Watch and those other groups that we've discussed. They don't cost any money. Neighbors are very good at keeping other neighbors engaged and with that information. And I would say that if you're going to the store to buy cigarettes and booze, you can probably spring for the paper if it's that important to you. But again, a great place to get that information is from your Neighborhood Watch groups that hopefully everyone here will get involved in. Anybody else?
Hi, Lindy, my name is Shereen, and I work with the Mariposa Community Home, and as far as cutting the grass, we would love to be able to help you and assist with that. So if you can come by, we can just, yeah, Thursday, tomorrow, from 3:00 to 5:00, and we'll work something out, okay?
I'd just like to refresh on the people that are scared to walk in the neighborhoods at night when it's dark. I noticed that on my street along, I live, I own a property on Hogwin, it's very, very dark. There's no streetlights, and if there's streetlights, the trees are covering. I wouldn't walk down my street at night. So I think that the lights need to be brightened, or we need to add some more lighting. Then the dogs are barking, you're scared, you can be terrified, especially if you're, you know, a single mom like I am, so...
I can understand that, and that was one, that's a question I would direct to the city when we're done with this portion here, or somebody here, anybody in particular they should talk to about that? Okay? All right, fair enough.
Those are the things we want to hear, and specifically, we have some city staff here, and we can take care of at least the trees part of it and deal with the other lighting issues as well, too. So thank you for that. So someone will come talk to you before the end of the night to get your specific information?
Like Captain Nelson had said, this is great, when you inform us of this, then we're able to act on it and fix these things. And just to share a little bit with you, I understand what you were saying, too, about, you know, people that have handicap or that don't have transportation, or they have their children that they need to babysit. Just to share a little bit with you, I have the honor of saying that I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up right on 10th Street West and Avenue Y, a two-bedroom duplex. It was eight of us family members. And one of the things that I remember is, our home was full of love and good cooking from my mom, very good cooking. And every day, she made sure that her children were clean and sitting at the table, so that when her husband, our father, arrived, we could eat a good home-cooked meal. But as soon as I left our home, walked out of that door, we were in a neighborhood that was very challenging, as we saw here. There was drugs, there were gangs, but I was still a kid, and I wanted to play outdoors. One day, as I'm running out with my little Barbie, nine years old, I'm running across the street, and I saw a drug deal being done, made, I should say. Didn't know what I just saw, but they saw me. They started to chase me. I ran and ran, holding on dearly with my Barbie. Unfortunately, they caught me, and I got beat up at nine years old. I had two black eyes, and I had bruised ribs, and that was my warning. I ran home crying, and I have to tell you, as tiny as my mother is, was, with her little self, barely speaking English, she was determined to not let that happen in her neighborhood anymore. And as Captain Nelson mentioned, we started what we didn't know at that time, the Neighborhood Watch. We got to know our neighbors. She informed them all of what happened, and she said, "If we don't stand up and act, it will happen again, not to my daughter, but to your child, or to us, to someone." Talking about the neighborhoods, about the grass being mowed. There were elderly that lived in our neighborhood that were on a fixed income, and they couldn't go out there and cut their grass. But because we bonded so much as neighbors, and we were aware of that, we took turns and mowed their lawn. And it was all done with our neighborhood. My mom designed this thing where if we saw the gangs back and they started to feel like they could take control of our neighborhood, she designed something as simple as a red flag, a huge red flag, that we all had in our neighborhood. And when we saw danger, danger, we ran out with the red flag, and we, all of us kids, knew what that meant. And we took control of our neighborhood, is what I'm getting at, because we would not allow anyone to come in, and we loved our neighbors as our family. And that's when, like you're sharing, that there's people that are seniors, there's people on fixed income, there's people that can't mow their lawns, and we understand that, but it takes all of us as neighbors to help each other out. Of course, we have to at times call 911, have the sheriffs there, but when we take control of our surrounding and of our neighbors being our family, that's when we have more pride, that's when we have more ownership of the outcome. So again, I thank you all for coming and continuing to ask these questions, and I'm not sure if it's, I don't think it's over, but I just wanted to share that story with you, just to say, I've been there, lived it, and with my little mom taking control and starting something as minor as a red flag, really gave our neighborhood a sense of safety. And I can't emphasize more by saying, we are all family. And I can't emphasize more by saying, we are all family, and we need to treat each other as such, and really care for the outcome of all of us.
We're gonna give the sheriff a break, now you're gonna ask any city questions, you can ask sheriff ones, too, but what do you think we should do more of? If you were mayor for a day, what would you do? If you were mayor today, what would you do, or what do you think we should do more of?
Hi, my name is Alicia, and I'm a single parent of two wonderful boys, and if I was mayor for a day, I would open up, I would start a program, like, I'm old school, so back in the day, they had the Big Brothers and Sisters, I don't know if, programs, I would like to see that happen here, because I can only do so much as a, as a mom, I mean, I'm, I'm great at it, don't get me wrong, but I feel that my sons are at risk, because I can't watch them 24/7, but I can't teach them what a, a male role model can teach them. And I would like to see more programs like that, teen pregnancy, drug prevention, I mean, employment, career-wise, everything, you know, positive attitude and reinforcements for our kids, 'cause where I live, right there on 10th Street West and Avenue Y, it's, I'm like paranoid all the time, not that I'm, you know, like, can't go out and enjoy myself, but I do not feel comfortable with my boys going out to go play because of what's going on in the area. So I would like to see more programs for our, for our kids from ages five on up, you know?
How old are your kids?
He's nine, I have one nine and one 12, and I feel like they're at risk.
You're the kind of parent that we're talking about that cares about your kids, give her a hand, 'cause you got what you're concerned.
Thank you.
What, what we're trying to do is, the lady there talked about the community homes, which is to give kids a place to go. We have Lancaster Cares, which is a great, it's an award-winning program between the Lancaster School District and the city. There's a wonderful, not so far from here, Boys and Girls Club, J-Duke's been there for 20 years, and that, that's a wonderful thing, I know that Steve Baker has other options, too, but that's exactly it. You're planning now, when your kids are the right age, so I'd encourage you afterwards, we'll have a city staffer talk to you, but there are programs out there, and I take to heart what Lindy said, it, it's frustrating that when we know the programs are out there, but we're not getting the message out, we're not doing the job. There are programs, so thank you for that. Someone will talk to you, but we'll figure a way to get those out. Okay, who else wants to be mayor for a day?
Hi, I had a question. Many of us homeowners in this area bought our homes maybe five, six, seven, 10 years ago, when prices were high. Now our homes are, most of us are underwater, our homes are worth 60, 70, 80,000 dollars. What programs does the city have in terms of trying to assist homeowners in fixing up their properties? You know, with negative equity, how can you do even simple repairs, you know, get new roofs or fix driveways or things like that? I understand that the city in the past has had some kind of driveway programs where you can get a, the city will give you a loan to fix your property, and then the loan is not, I guess is silent or something until you sell the property. Are there programs that can assist homeowners in making repairs and upgrading their homes, since we have no equity in our homes and we're not likely to have it for years to come?
That's a good question, the answer is yes. The state had dissolved the redevelopment agencies, which paid for some of those programs, but there still are some programs. What I invite you to do is go on our website or call our housing department, Elizabeth Brewbaker's our director, and she's got 30-some years' experience, and what we do is, we're able to, if we don't have a program, at least put you in the right direction. There are programs for what you said. There's also with some new federal programs where you can maybe even redo your loan to a lower amount and, and such, so there's a wealth of information in our city, on our city website, but really call our housing department, they can put you in touch with those. We do have some of those programs, and the county has some as well, too.
Good evening, I just wanted to speak briefly to my sister's comment about needing mentors for her sons, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. For those of you who don't know, I am a probation officer and also a family therapist, so I deal with this on a daily basis. But what I would like to submit to you all, to us, is to seek the churches as a resource. A lot of times churches are overlooked, but really, in many communities, the church is a very viable resource, including mentors and, and resources, and so I just thought I'd put that out there, don't forget the churches, because we're here for you.
I'm with Paving the Way Foundation, and what I'd like to do is invite you guys out to our block party. It's going to be held on Gadsden and Avenue H8 on Saturday. It will start from the wellness house, and it will take on from 11 o'clock till 2 o'clock. We'll have resources there. It is a part of the program that was designed with the survey, where they went to the community to find out what is needed in the community, so we will be bringing resources, we'll have vendors there, we'll have hot dogs for the kids and sodas, and we'll also have music, and we'll invite you, please, to come out and join us and meet each other and let us know what you need in your community.
Thank you.
Through the magic of the internet, there is a program, one of our commissioners found, Keep Your Home California, which offers exactly some of the things you were talking about. So if, if afterwards you want to, we can show you the website. And if you have questions for the sheriff's department, too, that's fine, so any questions for anyone up here?
I have maybe a question mixed with a suggestion. In our neighborhood, like, I'm very, we're close with our neighbors and everything like that, but we have one house that's kind of a frequent flyer with the sheriff's department, and you guys are amazing, your response time is excellent, we call, you guys are there, you guys, you know, whatever, but they, they rent the house and you guys break down their door, their neighbor repairs it, you know, it's not, it doesn't seem to be a problem, I mean, their landlord repairs it. It doesn't seem to be a problem for the landlord. Is there anything that, like, we can do, like, for these consistent, like, like, I mean, like, I've never had my door battered down, so I don't know what that is like, but like, I, that seems like if you guys are doing that a lot, then maybe, like, that's the problem in the neighborhood, and, yeah, like, can you get on the landlord for that, for allowing that to continue? 'Cause I got a, I have a stack of theft police reports from you guys, from, for just me, from them stealing from us, and it's so frustrating.
Absolutely. We, we have a nuisance property ordinance, which essentially says, if you go over a certain amount, you get charged, the owner of the home, $1,000 per incident. So what I'd like to know is if you can give to whichever of the deputies that's in this area, that particular address, they can have Deputy Jordan run it, and we'll see if it's something that should have been done for the nuisance property ordinance. The idea is to get the landlord's attention, and when you start taking money from them, then they start reacting.
Right, okay.
So, and I, I, I'll, we'll check personally, 'cause I'd like to know why it hasn't happened yet, maybe there's a breakdown system.
Okay.
The officer that was talking about the mental health issues, my name's Eddie, and I'm with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and we have in the Antelope Valley, what was, you mentioned the, the task force, it's called the Law Enforcement Mental Health Task Force, and this force was developed to handle or to train the first responders in the Antelope Valley on mental health issues and how to keep themselves safe, the individuals safe, and you and your neighborhood safe. And this is going to start, well, our goal is to start that training for the first responders during Mental Health Awareness Month next month. And all of the first responders and public service officers will be trained, it will take approximately about a year and a half to get them all trained, so we all look forward to that. So we are working hard to get more resources in the Antelope Valley and to provide safety for everyone.
And we appreciate that. After Sheldon, let's see if the kids have any questions, there's a lot of kids in the audience, maybe some of you guys have questions or suggestions.
Yeah, my question was just an expansion on hers, and the, the nuisance property ordinance, does it stay a fine or does it graduate to more punitive actions?
It, it graduates to more punitive actions, there's a two or three incidents where you get a warning, and then it graduates to fine, and it can graduate to more punitive actions, including seizure for a severe, and in, especially if there's narcotics in a house, if there's narcotics in a house sales, then you can go to seizure, but I saw that, I think Deputy Ruiz got the information, so we'll, we'll be on that one, I promise, sheriff's department will. Any of the kids have a question?
I was just wondering what the procedure would be for, I pay for my trash, and my neighbor is dumping their trash over their yard, which is now a park. What would I have to, what would, what do I go, what do I do?
Everyone's required to have trash service, all you have to do is, we'll have a staff member get the address, we'll check with waste management and see if they have a, if they have a contract, if someone's living there, they have to have trash service.
Okay.
There's a limited exception, but essentially you have to have trash service, so Linda can get that address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I submitted a question online to your website, and I never did get a response from them. My question is, with respect to the American Disabilities Act, putting trash cans, there's a letter that went out to everybody, trash cans ought to go on the street, which takes away half the travel for disabled people in wheelchairs. My mom is a disabled person in a wheelchair, so where are we on putting, allowing trash cans to go on the street? If we do put them in the street and we don't get a ticket or citation for that, that's great, except that now the street sweeper doesn't do his job, so we lose a municipal service, because we are, we're, we have an issue, a conflict with the ADA.
That's a really good question, and frankly, I can't give you a really good answer on that. There's, there's a trade-off on that. What I'd like to, what I can tell you is, we're, we're looking at that ordinance, 'cause we're not happy with the way it is now. I will also tell you, get a sneak preview, you guys are gonna be very happy with something we're gonna be proposing to the council in the budget, which is gonna be a lot more customer-friendly, allowing people to report any incident and get immediate feedback and be able to track what the response is. So it's sort of a sneak preview, you'll be seeing that as we propose the budget to the council in early June, to make sure that you'll be able to track, the moment you make a issue or complaint, you'll be able to track it to resolution.
Maybe like have a patrol go around in the morning for trash day, because like, like, my kids will be walking to school and there'll be someone strange digging in our trash, and I'm like, sorry, there's like five people here ahead of you, you know, like, they already got it, so, you know, so maybe like, maybe, like, it's, it's like a safety thing, 'cause like, these weird people are on my lawn digging through my trash, and like, and there're like rows of them, like, I'm surprised they didn't see each other. And then maybe some are more, like, braver, go further down, I don't know, but, you know, that kind of thing, like, maybe have patrols around that kind of thing? 'Cause I mean, like, that's like a financial security problem, I would think, not just like, like stealing documents.
I, I know, and I'm not an expert, I know there's a rule on, maybe Pat knows, on trash, is it, once it's on the street, can people?
No. There may be a, a city works-
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to talk to the deputies, 'cause I know it's, it's, there's a specific law about when the trash is no longer yours and people can go through it, yeah.
It can be on my lawn.
Again, just, do any of you guys know this?
City ordinance, Lancaster has a city ordinance, that you're not allowed to run your stuff. When you see it, we do assign for more of that.
But is it, is it the same, I mean, obvi, is it all the time, every trash day?
Every trash day.
Okay, that's, see, that's, that's perfect, that's perfect information, 'cause what the sheriff's department needs to know is, specific time, date, repetitive behavior, and then they can deal with that. Okay, and maybe we can coordinate with Lance, maybe we can have code enforcement or public safety go out, too, so we don't have to tie up deputy resources. Okay, that's something that's-
It's probably the same people, so if we send someone out to deal with it once, they'll probably won't deal with, they probably won't be again, so we can take that information.
I apologize, 'cause those are my people. And we've been telling them for over a year that it's illegal to dumpster dive into neighborhoods, so honestly, we've been trying to be proactive with them, because it is a nuisance, and it's not safe, and, for either side, and we've been trying to get them to stop doing that, so, don't know if we do any other kind of an incentive thing, but for many, it's their only economy, 'cause they've lost their ability to get general relief or their disability. The other thing I want to say is that, you know, we're the water hole for the neighborhoods, Grace Resource Center, so if you have concerns or have a need, you're always welcome to come talk to my staff, and we're very close with the sheriffs and the city, and we'd be glad to help out, give you extra groceries if it'll help, do whatever we need to do to, you know, ease the pain for a little bit and maybe get you some help with your issues.
I wasn't trying to insult anyone, but like, we're like a single-income, four kids, like, we recycle our own stuff, like, we don't have any, no.
No, I, I mean, I, I think it's, I'll, I'll be frank, I haven't, when we do a lot of these, I haven't heard that particular concern before, to be honest, but it's an issue in your neighborhood, and that's something that's, again, it's a fairly easily addressed, and it's not gonna be punitive, I'm sure what's gonna happen is, they're gonna refer folks to Grace Resources and say, you don't need to do this, here's where you need to go, and they'll help you out.
Like, we're like a street over, my kids walk to school early in the morning, so I mean, like, they're out there with my kids.
You, you have our word, someone will deal with that situation, and we'll try to get them hooked up with Grace Resources, so at least they're, can get a meal without having to dig in the trash.
I'll hand them, like, some, like, information to Grace Resources, that's fine, like, I really don't have recycling, like, we recycle.
Is everyone familiar with Grace Resources, and you guys, okay, good.
This is to Mr. Nelson, who do you call for noise complaints, particularly loud music?
The sheriff's station, the regular business line, it's 948-8466. Now, I will tell you, just like any other incoming call, everything is prioritized based on the potential for life-threatening or injuries. So if your call's coming in about loud music, I can tell you, almost without exception, there'll be a delay in getting to it, because we just don't have enough cars out there to deal with the other things that are occurring that, that are potentially either gonna result in property loss or, or injury to people. Although we do take loud music and party calls seriously, and a big part of that is because so many of those gatherings end in violence, so we have made a concerted effort to get to those types of calls sooner than we have in the past, and then, and a big part of that is because the city has, has allowed us to do so through the extra resources that they provide, but it would just be the regular business line for the station.
There seems to, with the, the nuisance or vicious dog, there seems to be a, a dual loop between code enforcement, the animal control, and public safety, 'cause I had a situation myself, that, that I got, some, some neighbors behind me have some, some vicious dogs, and, and the dogs are still there, this has been a year in this, in this loop, because there's, there's things that the city manager, off, I guess there's things that your office can do and things that you can't, that belong to code enforcement or public safety or animal control, and it seems that there isn't a lot of crosstalk between them in order to get rid of these two vicious dogs. I mean, these dogs have killed three neigh, three dogs of two neighbors. So I would figure by that time that these dogs would be removed, but I guess there's other issues with this, with this house also, but with the, with the dogs in, in particular, I can't seem to figure out who can actually go in and take these dogs.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that happens, and based on the fact situation you described, they should be taken, and it's no excuse that, you know, we're not coordinating, we need to do better. What we have done in our public safety office, and I give our public safety manager, Lee Derico, a lot of credit, is we brought people over who have code enforcement and animal control experience to work on neighborhood issues specifically like that, to do that coordination for you, 'cause when you're a contract city and contract with the county, sometimes there's some things that don't happen. I think we have two of our folks here, Anthony Perez and Scott O'Connor, I think they're outside, they may have heard they were gonna get an assignment. They can deal with it, they're there specifically to deal with those neighborhood issues, to deal with the coordination. We don't wanna be like a bureaucratic organization that you get the runaround, I'm sorry that happened, but we have set up a system where we have one single point of contact that can deal with neighborhood issues that would otherwise take a lot of resources. So Anthony or Scott, tell-
Every organization has, has been willing to do, do their part, but their part only goes so far.
Yeah, but you still have the problem, you still have the problem, you're not supposed to have the problem, so, we, they will get with you and figure out what, what it is, either Anthony or Scott, before you leave tonight. Okay, thank you.
My name is Carlos, Lieutenant Carlos Sosa with the Salvation Army. Just something that was mentioned here about meals, about food, so I just wanna, to share with the community, to share it with you, we serve meals, three- We serve meals three times a week. We've been faithfully serving meals for the last three years and a half, when I was sent here from Redondo Beach to Lancaster. And I saw there was a need, those three particular days, two days, nobody was feeding. So we've been serving meal, meals, hot meals, if you, any, if you see someone hungry there. And also, also another thing that community may not know, we're helping people with their utilities. The gas bill, it's up to a hundred dollars. So, and for low income people and a hundred dollars for the electricist as well. So people can get help with the gas, with the light. Right now I have funds for both. So for the meals, we haven't turned anyone away for not having enough meals, hot meals. Yesterday we served 150 meals. Another program that we are working right now, which I want to share with the community, and I'm trying to reach out to schools branching out, is a school, after school, music program, where many schools been cutting their budgets. So we started a after school music program, teaching piano, guitar, drums, bass, and vocal. It's a, we charge a little bit. It's very affordable, something like less than nineteen dollars a month, when one lesson out there is about thirty-five dollars, one and a half an hour lesson. And we are, there's a way also offering grants, multiple siblings, we have discounts. So, and we started with one teacher. Right now we have ten teachers and we are hiring more. Yesterday we had ninety kids in the afternoon, learning music. Today we had about ninety some. We, we start with zero. We have about two hundred students. And we are right now, just passed flyers today, this is my repulsive school and some other schools. We are spending a lot of money on flyers, but people are responding and we're going to add another day. So it's, there are, there are things out there. If every one of us, different people here, we are doing our part, so we can help the community. I just want to share that with you. Maybe you weren't aware of that. Yesterday also we served three hundred twenty seniors with, with food baskets. So there are things available. Salvation Army's there also to help the community. Right now we do have funds for lights and, no, lights on the May third. But tomorrow, if you go there in the morning, we can help people with the gas bill, tomorrow or the after, three times a week, we've been doing that. So you can always ask us, we're there. All right, thank you very much.
That's very good to know. And I think unless it's changed, you have a table outside where people can come and, and talk with you after. Though, once again, any other questions or concerns?
I'm sorry if like this is all over the place, but I know that community right now that there's not a lot of people working and there's disabled people and there's not a lot of jobs. And the economic right now is hard. Like I see people getting degrees and working and like one of my parents, it's been two years since they hadn't had a job. They went to college, they went to high school, they got everything done. And I don't know why it's that the economics do it so hard. Like why, why don't we have enough jobs?
That's a good question. I'm not sure anybody up here could answer that one.
What, what we do have though is, we'll have someone talk to afterwards. There are, through the state and through the city, there's certain programs and certain, like the Economic Development Corporation, EDD, Economic Development Department of the State. So maybe we can look at that. But you're right, there aren't enough jobs. It's, you know, we're, this council's priority has been public safety and jobs. I think they've put a lot of emphasis on attracting companies. But at the end of the day, this is a difficult area and a lot of the, what this area is dependent upon, which is construction, aerospace, a lot of government employment between school districts and stuff, are all industries that are on the decline. They're not hiring, they're, they're getting rid of folks. And then, you know, you know about the Bank America Call Center with that too. It's, it's a difficult time. We do have a really good economic development staff, they're down to two people now, but I think they can maybe help. So hopefully you can, we'll get your name and we'll have someone call you. I'd like to have Patty Garibay come up again. We have a group of, of staff members at the city, the Safer and Stronger Neighborhoods. And that's a fancy way of saying that these are overworked people that care about their community and get together and do additional things after work without pay to help neighborhoods. So that's their mission statement and she can introduce them.
Yeah, we actually had most of them leave, but I can mention their names, because they were here to help set up and do everything in preparation for the event. So Kelvin Tana Tongo, he's part of our committee, he's in the back. Brenda Gam Lousky, who's in the city administration office, she's not here, but. Josh Thomas, who's in Parks, Recreation and Arts. Louis Garibay in Economic Development. Lee Durico with Public Safety. Chun Ying in Planning. Roxy Carmanian, who is in Public Works. Monique Edwards, who is in Finance. And Richard Long, who is in Public Works also. So again, they were very excited to set this all up, but unfortunately they kind of gradually left, so, but did a lot, a lot of good work, they put a lot of good work into making this all happen, so we're very grateful for them. Anybody else have any questions? Any questions left?
I don't have a question. I'm back here. I am Christina, I am with Assemblyman Steve Fox's office. We are here to also let you know as residents, if you have problems at the state level, we are here to help you. Problems with EDD, anything like that, please come to our office. We are able to get these processed a little bit quicker than you are on your own. And also any concerns that you may have, sometimes we're able to bring a little bit of money into the community and, you know, fix the park up or, you know, anything that needs attention, we can try to help. But we don't know that you guys need the help until you contact the state as well.
Just a quick comment, I've heard a lot of people mention jobs. Of course, the job creation comes from the stakeholders at the city, when employees are coming here, but there are a lot of jobs and job fairs that are around here and in Santa Clarita, that we don't have a lot of people show up. So down at EDD, that's who I'm with, EDD down the street. If you frequent that place more, you'll find out a lot about jobs, but you can't come, you know, once a month, you can't come twice a month, you know, a couple of times a week, because you'll miss the window. A lot of times there's a short window, that today they had a big recruitment down at College of the Canyons. In AVTA, they have transportation that goes to New Hall if you decide to take a job down there. So really enough people are not getting out to find out about the information. So I challenge everybody that's looking for a job to just kind of be very persistent and I think you'll, you'll find something.
Hi, good evening. My name is Judy Jones. I'm the executive director for the consortium and the manager for the EDD office. If you come in, we will help you. If you're, you have youth seventeen to eighteen and they need employment, I have a youth we hired out of a special program, the GROW program, who we employed afterwards. And we're putting kids to work, so we're there for you, we're happy to serve you. This is my veteran specialist, he can't, but I have other staff who can. And this is why we came, so we can listen. So if you had a concern about employment, we're the experts in the field and we're really good at what we do, so please come see us. And my name is Judy or JJ, you can find me there. Thank you.
Gentlemen over here mentioned about the homes being underwater. I am one of individual, my wife and I, we lost a home in, I don't know, it was two thousand and five or so. One of the things we discovered is a fraud that has been perpetrated on the citizens here in America, Antelope Valley. And here's how it goes. Through the foreclosure procedure, they'll initiate a foreclosure. And what the banks would do, they would go to the insurance company and get that money on what they claim as a loss. So they'll get the full value of that loan. And then what they'll do, they'll confiscate the, the property. Well, that's illegal. And so my question is to the city, does the city, because all this goes through the city courts, does the city have a system set up to catch this type of fraud? I know that the federal government and worked with the state government and they kind of worked out a deal to compensate some of the injured parties that lost their homes through this fraudulent system. The nature of our country hasn't changed and the Antelope Valley hasn't changed. Loss of jobs, when you lose your jobs, you lose your income and lose your ability to pay for your home or your mortgage on the home. This is going to continue to happen if there's not a governing body, a policing agency that catches this. I don't know if you're aware that this is how the fraud is perpetrated on the, the American people, but we caught it, we understand. I know for sure, because it happened to us. We had an insurance agent call us and there was a fourth party trying to collect insurance money on that same mortgage. So they sell these things multiple times. Your house could be sold thirteen times at a mortgage of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but by the time they finish with it, it's ten million dollars that they've, they've reaped in their benefits. So I'm wondering if the city's even aware of this criminal activity that's perpetrated on the citizens.
Your specific question, I'm not sure that I could address, but in general, banks, mortgage, everything is federally regulated. And if, if that is occurring, what I would suggest is you get the information to the Sheriff's Department who has a fraud unit and they could turn it over if it's a federal offense. As a city, we don't track loans of private loans and, and the workings of banks. Banks are federally regulated, as are mortgages.
That's why I think that that it should be.
Well, I understand that, but it would be duplicative for the city to set up a system that's already set up by the federal government. What I'm saying is there is a government entity that you pay for that's does exactly, supposed to monitor exactly what you're saying. That's who we need to get the information to. So if we can get specific information, you know, we can give to one of the deputies. Yes, that's a good idea. You can also contact the congressman's office as well too. Government entities trying, we sometimes don't do a good job, but try not to duplicate services, because you know, that's where you get in trouble. For example, there's like eighty-seven different programs in the federal government dealing with education. You don't need that. Other questions or comments? Anyone want to make any? Lynda?
Just to say that what I use the example of, for people, it's just liquor stores, cigarettes stores, not everyone takes a vacation. Not everyone comes forth and takes a vacation. Sometimes people take a vacation, they're taking vacation with their beer, with their alcohol, their cigarettes, whatever else is their duty. If we are going to be about, and understanding one of the people that are positive, but just because someone has a habit that is a sin habit, you know, a sin addict, doesn't mean that they're trash, doesn't mean that they're not worthy of being included. As long as being excluded, the key problem, we should concentrate on the people that are actively being proactive, being proactive, okay? But those people that are being proactive, they still may have to walk past something that if the city could put up information, even if it is, we know that there's going to be a sign if I hurt them that says, this is what's going on. Newspaper, I get the newspaper, somebody else gave it to me, thank you. I get the newspaper, but it is almost three hundred dollars a year. He said, well, cigarettes, that's probably six months, I don't know what it would be. If people are, as people are talking, people are hurting and they're struggling, it may mean there's only one person working. That little bit of extra, or before they used to get in the car and pack those limes to go to the beach, now they know you go to Paula Park. So maybe now their little bit of treats is they go around the corner. Doesn't make a difference, doesn't make a difference. But do not exclude, because once we do that, that says you're not working on time. And when we tell people you're not working on time, then what do they have to do, then what do they have to gain?
Well, I, I hope that's not how it came across, because that's not intended, whatever. We really do want to get information to people, because there are a lot of programs out there. You make a good point. I was talking to Councilwoman Johnson about that. I think that maybe in, when you're meeting with the captain and stuff, we can have a city rep come over to that, because there are outlets. Schools are a wonderful outlet, for example. Schools are the center of neighborhoods and in a lot of ways is where people get their information. So there are ways to get information out. If we're not getting it out, you know, we could do a better job. That's a, that's an easier problem than not having programs to start with. So I think you make a very good point. We'll deal with it.
If we don't have any more questions, then that concludes our program. We do still have our sheriff deputies available and Captain Nelson and our city officials and Councilwoman Johnson available if you have any questions. Thank you so much for coming and, you know, as we mentioned, take advantage of programs like the Unite Lancaster, where you can, you know, kind of take your neighborhood back and do something really positive and improve your neighborhood. So thank you, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for joining us for tonight's town hall meeting. We appreciated all the valuable insight and feedback from our concerned residents. Reporting from Lancaster, California, I'm Rebecca Weir.